Trustee Bill?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Supervisor Melkey?
Here.
Treasurer Rice here, and Clerk Cody will be late.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Would you have an agenda in front of us? Happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
I moved past the, or to accept the agenda as written.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved, and we do have a presentation tonight. Our fiscal 2022 audit results by Ali Barnes. Mr. Steeldriver, do you have anything that you'd like to say before we give her the floor?
No.
The floor is yours. Welcome.
All right. Thank you for having me. Happy to be here. All right, well, we'll get started then. So the main point of why we do an audit is to issue an opinion for you on your financial statements. And this year, as is in years past, the township received an unmodified or clean opinion. So that means that we believe the information presented in your financial statements has been done so in accordance with the rules that have to be followed and considering things like materiality. So that's the very high level use that you want to hear. So that's excellent. So we're going to touch on some of the financial numbers here, and we're going to start in the general fund with your revenues. So you can see here the revenue trend for the past five years. So this has been trending up. This is a similar story at other local municipalities. So this is not surprising, especially the jump kind of there in 2021 and then staying up at that level in 2022. We're seeing that many places. Really, the makeup of your revenues has not changed too significantly. Obviously, the blue section there at the bottom is the most significant, and that is your state shared revenues. This year, the area where you did have the most fluctuation was in kind of that off-white gray section, which is local contributions. And that increased this year because of additional dollars from the East DDA that came in to go towards some of the projects that were happening here. That's really the main piece there. So total general fund revenues were about 2.86 million for 2022. We'll take a look at the expenditure side then. Here you see a similar trend. So revenues were going up, and so are general fund expenditures, which is not a bad thing. Right? You're here to spend money for the public. You want to maintain a healthy enough fund balance, but the goal is to provide services and make your communities good, livable places. So general fund expenditures were about 2.55 million for 2022. Again, you can see the breakdown here of the high-level categories where you're spending. So public works for you this year was the most significant, and the majority of the increase there, you can see that that accounted for more expenditures this year, is going to be related to the additional local projects this year. So we saw extra money coming in from the East DDA, and this is those projects that it will come into cover. Okay. On the fund balance side then, we're seeing a very common trend. We're just, we're just going up. We're not, we're not going to go down here. So general funds' fund balance has continued to increase. It increased about $311,000 this year. So it sits at about $6.14 million. The majority of your fund balance is unassigned. You do have some, about $852,000, which is that off-white gray section there, that is assigned fund balance. And that comes from, we take a look at your original budget for 2023 and say, what did you budget for revenues? What did you budget for expenditures? And if your expenditures, you're planning to have more than revenues, so you're planning to use fund balance, that's what makes up that great portion there. So you were planning to use some fund balance in this upcoming year, so we show that here. So really, your unassigned fund balance is about 5.2 million at the end of the year. And then we take a look at what your ratio of fund balance is to your general fund expenditures. And sometimes that's a useful percentage, and sometimes it's not. It just kind of depends on what else you have going on. You have a very high percentage. So you, even though, so that's going to be that orange line, and then the percentages on the right-hand side align with that orange line. So you'll see that it has been decreasing, but you're still at about 250%. So that's a very healthy fund balance to have. That really allows you to do good project management, to do some strategic planning, and really have funds there to be able to work with. You don't have to worry about, oh, are we gonna, are we gonna be able to make payroll? Your payroll is covered, and you can plan on bigger things than that. So it's a very healthy position to be in. So we're going to switch gears and just talk about a couple of the other funds as well. So FIRE Fund here, I give you kind of a lot of information on one slide. That fund holds about 1.1 million in cash at the end of the year, and it has a fund balance of about 1 million. So not, there's not a lot of other balance sheet activity that happens in that fund at year-end that changes really what's between cash and fund balance, just a small amount. And then you'll see that the expenditures were about $815,000 for this year. So if we look at kind of that off-white bar, you'll see that fund balance has been increasing in that fund the last couple of years. I know traditionally, this fund will start to increase up for a few years, and then maybe there's a large equipment, maybe a fire truck has to get purchased, and so you need to build that up some to have those dollars available for when there's a fire truck that needs to get purchased or some other large capital outlay. So not out of our range of expectation for that to be increasing here. All right, we're going to just switch gears then and talk about internal controls and compliance. So while we do look at a lot of numbers, we also look at a lot of processes. And there are also a lot of items that the states and the feds want us to check compliance-wise. So I don't even know how many questions we're up to. Sometimes the lists seem like hundreds of questions. We're probably up to about 50-some compliance questions from the state side of what they think is important for us to look at. So overall, when we were all said and done, we did have one issue that we identified. This is not, in my opinion, a systemic issue. This is kind of a one-time issue, and this relates to the budget within the ARPA fund. I would tell you that this budget issues within the ARPA fund are not uncommon right now because ARPA is a little hard to plan for all these projects, and sometimes things happen that you don't realize are happening, or they happen sooner than you were planning, and then you have expenses that maybe you didn't budget for. So in this case, your actual expenditures in the financial statements were in excess of what you approved by about $56,000. And for us, we have to do a materiality calculation, and $56,000 for that particular fund exceeds what we consider to be a material value, hence why we have to call it a material weakness. This was not a pervasive issue, though. General fund was just fine. And that fund, I would really expect that you're, you're keeping good tabs on that and have a much better grasp on budgeting for that fund. ARPA, like I said, while it is an issue and we do need to call it out, we do also understand ARPA is a little all over the map and a little bit hard to budget for sometimes. No significant deficiencies, and we also did not have any matters that we felt were significant enough to put in writing, like as a management comment. Those are more like suggestions. Any suggestions we did have, we felt were just fine, just communicating with, with the team. So with that, I would take any questions that you might have.
On the ARPA one, when you say in excess of approved budget, do you mean amended budget, or is that the originally approved budget?
Your amended budget.
Okay.
So I'm looking, I'm looking at page four dash five of the financial statement, which talks about that, and I would like to have, I don't understand this federal grant. Is that the ARPA money you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And where was the exposure, the $56,000? Which project was that?
I don't know specifically which project.
Sherri, can you speak to that? I think it was a combination of 2% funding and budgeting. Invoices came in '23, and can you speak to that for a moment, please?
Yep. The project that had the issue was with the Isabella County Road Commission. It was the Broomfield Road project that was approved. It was approved for, it was approved for $500,000. The road commission would pay for half, and the township would pay for half. Okay. And that's what the agreement with the road commission said, was $500,000, $250,000 each. But then the township received tribal 2% funding for $170,000. So we budgeted $250,000 in the ARPA fund. And at that time, we weren't sure about the tribal funding. The tribal funding came in, and the township shared that tribal funding with the road commission. So when the road commission billed us, they billed us for the 250, or they billed us for half of the project and also the tribal 2%, the half. So the bill came in at a little over $300,000 because of that sharing, but we had only budgeted $250,000. So then, when it all came out in the wash, we were over budget by the $56,000.
We had not budgeted sharing the 2% with the road commission is fundamentally what that is.
So that was the mistake that was made that caused this issue. When we received the bill from the road commission, it was January, and it was too late to bring it to the board. You can't amend the budget in January. It has to be amended in the fiscal year. So it was too late.
So was that 2% applied jointly? Was that 2% applied jointly?
There was discussion about how to, if and how to allocate the 2%. And I made the decision to share it with them. And maybe I wasn't thinking right at the time, but it felt like it was appropriate because we were kind of doing 50-50, so they helped us apply for the 2%. But then the communication of all that wasn't probably done timely. And so then we get the invoice, and it's for what we agreed to. But it's more of a, I think, a budgeting. I don't want to dismiss it, but it's a budgeting and accounting presentation as much as anything else in crossing fiscal years.
So how much was the 2% then? $56,000?
170.
The 2% was $170,000. And half of that, you know, would be the township's, and half of that would be the road commission's. But the project came in at $442,000, approximately, so it was, the project, actual cost of the project was less than $500,000. So the township's share of $250,000 is less than, you know, it was only half of the $442,000, and that's why it's $56,000.
I see. I get it.
And this was all the extension that the last piece that we added to the Lincoln Broomfield project, right? I mean, all this was done basically beginning of November. It was late in the year.
It was in October.
Yeah, October, but yeah. It was late in the year when all that happened.
Well, I just don't remember getting notified about this $56,000 extra dollars.
We weren't.
Well, why wouldn't we be? Isn't that something?
I don't think we realized it till...
January.
Till the audit and...
Oh. Oh.
So this way, this, no, does not affect like what you're writing about the internal controls? Our internal controls are solid. It was just a one isolated issue that occurred, but everything else is solid. Management is doing a solid job. Internal controls and financially, we're well. Okay.
Yeah, had this happened earlier in the year, we probably would have done amendment for it, and then wouldn't have been even noticed by you.
This is what we're seeing, that the month after, you know, you had your chance to amend the budget, people are getting invoices, and there are these different sharing agreements that are happening. And, you know, the money is there, right? You knew the project was happening. It's, it's a matter of budget presentation in your financials here.
Well, anything with federal grant attached to it is going to have a lot of strings. A lot of paperwork and a lot of strings.
So just for clarity, I think I understand this, but I think it was the third page, the general revenues.
Okay.
You mentioned in the gray area that local contributions was largely the EDA, which would be speaking to that same project, in fact. So that's a result of the EDA essentially reimbursing the township directly, the general fund, correct? So the township writes the check for the big project, and the EDA says, here's our portion, rather than the EDA paying the road commission directly. Yeah, okay. Is there a reason that that type of expenditure shows up in the last three years, but not in, say, '18 and '19? Are we just categorizing that differently, or?
There prob, there must not have been any contributions for projects back during those years.
Okay.
Otherwise, there, there could have been something, or if it was minute enough, it would have been in that other category, but that's relatively small, too.
Yeah, and the EDA was waiting on this project for a long time, wasn't doing large joint projects with the township at that time, right? In '18 and '19.
We have been using, we've been working with both the West and the East EDAs more to create funding partnerships for projects wherever we can.
And I think that's evident from the EDA perspective as well, meaning...
They've approved, but it's all part of their budget that they approved.
Yes, and I think there's good reception to that from the EDA board, is my point.
And we like to pay for it out of general fund because these assets are township assets, not EDA assets.
That makes sense. I thought I understood. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions? Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ali.
That brings us to item six on our agenda, public hearings, of which we have done. So we'll move to item seven, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:23 PM. Seeing no one present coming forward, and no one is connected virtually, we'll close public comment at 7:24 PM. No proposed potential closed session. Always pause just in case somebody has a need to. That brings us to item nine, report boards and comments. Current list of boards and commissions, appointments as needed. We did have a resignation on ZBA. I did forward you to that, that, right? Okay. Brandon LaBelle has stepped down from the ZBA. I think he was on a one-year term. And I did communicate with him, just made sure everything was okay. And he said, I actually really enjoyed serving. It was just, I had other stuff going on. I gotta, had to resign. So with that said, we're back in the hunt to fill that seat. And Trustee Brown is currently an alternate, and it would be ideal if you, as second alternate, never had to serve. So we need to fill your seat, too, if that's possible, ideally. You don't take that negatively, right?
No, not at all. I did have to serve last Wednesday, and that's no problem. But yeah, I'll do what I have to do. But yeah, if we can, if, if you guys know anybody, we'll get them on there.
Do you know if you have any business coming up in the next month or two, or you're not aware?
I don't know what this is.
With that, that'll move us, any other comments on that? That'll move us to item nine B on the agenda, board member reports. Welcome, Clerk. Trustee Thering?
I do not have anything to report. I think we meet in the next week or so. I mean, the next meeting, I'll have something to share.
Clerk Cody, you just got here. You want me to come back to you, or are you ready? Anything to report on?
For the commission, the only report I really have was that they were starting Broomfield Road early.
Oh, I did notice.
Yeah. That was the biggest.
Did they indicate how long that project might take? They didn't? Next time you go, would you ask?
Ask them.
Awesome. Treasurer Rice?
Nothing really going on. I have a tax production meeting later this month, so all that's coming up, but that's about it.
We're good. Nothing tonight. Trustee Bill?
Yes, I do. I've attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting on May 2nd, and there was a presentation by the Greater Lansing Food Bank, Ms. Michelle Lance, by the CEO. And we got a lot of information on the food bank and what they do, and it was very enlightening, quite frankly. Apparently, I'm not, I don't usually, you know, know about this stuff, so... But the SNAP benefits are ending, the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, ending. It went away in February, and so there is a 23% year-over-year increase as of April 23rd, as of April 23 of the need for food bank. You know, different families needing the food bank. And the SNAP was giving them $80 to $93 a month, extra money to spend. Now, they don't have any money to spend at all for their goods and things. So thank goodness Tara and, and...
Amy.
Amy did the food, or the paper goods driving thing. But the website is www.glfb.org, and they, and they can do a pantry locator. If you know anybody that needs food that is underserved, then that would be where to go to get the nearest pantry, or the pantry that you would prefer to go to because you don't have to go to your nearest pantry in case you have issues with pride, where you don't want to be seen by people you know. You can go to any pantry you want. You just have to register. And in fact, they think that 50% of the people will not go because of that kind of issue. So there's a lot of people that have food insecurity. They believe that it averages about 10% throughout the country of 1 in 10 people unmet need. Okay, on to other business. They, they had saved $380,000 on their sheriff project because they didn't have, they found out they didn't have to use the Davis Bacon prevailing wage, and, but that's how it was bid out. So that's exciting. And then they also got a payroll administrator or payroll manager resigned immediately, like resigned. And they, I'm sorry. And they, so they had, they are replacing that with a payroll clerk and also a human resources specialist because the payroll clerk was doing both that, that job. And then they were also making all these other people in administration help them with all the other duties. So they're splitting it into two jobs and hoping to hire someone immediately, if you know anybody. And they're, and that's, I mentioned the care store, and that's about it.
On, on the note with the care store, just a little plug that we've extended the donation cycle for Union Township here at Township Hall till the...
May 19th.
May 19th?
Yes.
And if you've been out in the hallway, which we've all been, it's impressive so far. Trustee Brown?
Wait, I got one. I do have one more thing I missed on my notes here, is that they did go to the opioid, or the MAC Legislative Conference. Marino said that on the opioid funding, they found out that 70% of the funds from the opioid settlement must be spent for opioid mediation. So it can't be funded, funding any other part of your government. That's all I got. Sorry.
Oh, you're good. I'm good.
And I think I asked that last time, right?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to, I saw it there, and I was like, oh, I better mention that. Yeah.
Oh, I'm glad you did. Thank you.
Yeah, because I didn't know, and now I do know.
And now we know, too.
Yeah.
All good. No report.
Real quick, no EDA meeting since we last met. Brian and I and our manager met yesterday, right? Yesterday? Just to prepare a little bit for upcoming intergovernmental meeting on the 24th. On the 24th. Trustee Smith will be out of state, but since it's a virtual meeting, we're hoping, it sounds like Brian...
Call in.
Yeah, might be able to join. The EDA, I'll be traveling this next week, and so I will not be able to attend the EDA meeting, which I'm a little disappointed in because it's a very large agenda. But I obviously trust the board to do the good, the right stuff. But so in any event, EDA will meet next Tuesday. With that, item 10 on our agenda is consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Smith.
I did accounts payable, and it looked good.
Awesome. Any questions, comments on that? All in favor of approving consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to 11A new business, Fitness Court and McDonald Park Township Hall sidewalk paving contract. So we've kind of all been anticipating. we've kind of all been anticipating this.
Yes.
We were hoping it might come last year, but winter came upon us. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything you'd like to introduce on this?
Yes, just briefly, there is a staff write-up that begins on page 17 of your agenda packet. We're asking the board to consider approving a construction contract with the Isabella Corporation in the amount of $169,700 to do basically three things. One, they'd be constructing a concrete pad over here at McDonald Park for the outdoor fitness center to sit on. Also constructing sidewalk on right out here, east side, west side of Lincoln, across the front of Township Hall, around the corner, connecting into McDonald Park. And then the third item is concrete sidewalk work to, you may recall the township purchased the property of 5243 Jonathan Lane. And you have K Street just north of that, and then Jonathan Lane. And the sidewalk will go through the township property, connecting those two neighborhoods. So this contract is for those three projects. There was, it was bid, closing date for the bid to receive bids was April 26. We received one bid. Staff and our engineering consultant reviewed that bid. It was responsive. The pricing for the sidewalk work was very similar to what was bid on M20 out here. So it was in line and I think current with, with the market, although we only did receive one bid on that. This was a part of your FY23 approved budget in the Public Works Department. They are going to be doing the fitness pad first, and then going and doing these other two sidewalks, at least prior to the end of construction season. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction contract with the Isabella Corporation in amount of $169,700 to perform all work as specified in the bidding documents for the 2023 sidewalk improvement project to construct a concrete pad for the new outdoor fitness court in the McDonald Park, and to construct a concrete sidewalk around the east and north sides of the Township Hall into McDonald Park and across the township-owned lot of 5243 Jonathan Lane from East K Street to Jonathan Lane to connect the neighborhoods.
Support.
It's a long sentence without a period or a comma. Thank you for the support. I think this is a great idea. I love the whole concept of connecting the neighborhoods. I, I just think that is outstanding way to use that property over there. That's one, for me, that's, plus the sidewalks, of course. I'm sorry, buddy. Plus the sidewalks.
That's okay.
I saw her glaring at me. Plus the sidewalks. No, this has been a long time coming. Glad, glad to see you. And I know how you wear with sidewalks.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So motion by Brown, support by Rice.
Yep.
Trustee Bill? Sorry.
Yes, I'm very excited about all of these projects. It's excellent.
Comments, questions for our manager? I have one quick question. Do you know, and I meant to look this up, and it's my fault for not doing so. But the write-up does indicate that we budgeted for this, and I remember doing so. Do we budget enough last year based on, for the 169? Or do we need to do any kind of adjustment?
We don't need to do any sort of adjustment.
Kind of nice. Very good.
Yeah, really good.
And I agree with the sentiment by the other two trustees here. All of this is exciting. Anything else? All in favor of the motion to approve the sidewalk projects for here, around Township Hall, the pad for McDonald Park and connecting K and Jonathan Streets? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That's a good feeling one to get behind us. That takes us to 11A, I'm sorry, 11B, new business, building department file scanning. And just briefly, know that this was introduced slightly to the EDA board at our last meeting. So I was kind of familiar with this when it was in our packet. But with that, Mr. Stuldryer, do you have an introduction you'd like to give on this?
Yes, thank you. And again, there's a staff report that begins on page 31. And this has to do with records management. Over the years, we've been doing more and more, we've been receiving more and more things like site plans, construction plans electronically. Those are being filed in the net, on the network drives, and often within our VSNA back office software attached directly to the property in question. So we're trying not to add more paper to the mess. But we still have a lot of paper in the basement and other places. So what this project is about is trying to digitize the existing plans, whether they're site plans, construction plans. And the list could go on and on. This, we're looking at this to be at least probably a two-year project. We'll get into digitizing books of meeting minutes and agendas and those kinds of things that are stored in the basement often, sometimes in the clerk's office. Try to get those digitized. We've had a couple of floods in the basement, so we do have some exposure there. We did budget in FY23, a little over $30,000 to start this project. And then when we began looking into it to implement the project, we found that we were woefully underbudgeted for this. But as we started this project, and we're putting together specifications for an RFP, we found out that the state of Michigan has some services within their office of, I think they call it management, budget, and technology now, where they can assist local units of government in this digitization effort. So we met with them. And what the state has done is gone through their own RFP process and selected what they call a preferred vendor. So in working with them, they connected us with the firm that we're recommending here, Graphic Sciences, to work with that company in this digitization project. We've met with folks from Graphic Sciences. And you'll see in your packet beginning on page 34, a whole listing of subprojects to digitize, kind of by department, might be by subject matter. That whole thing costs $141,000. What we're trying to do this year is just focus on the building slash construction. So this would be the, the land use related, so construction, drawings, site plans, those kinds of things. In order to do that for this year, we need a couple of things from the board. One, approval to, for me to execute a service agreement with Graphic Sciences. And then also requesting a budget amendment to handle this phase of this total project. This phase is about $80,000. We had some monies budgeted in both the planning department and the building department. So part of this recommendation and resolution, if you end up adopting it, is moving money from, there was earmarked for scanning, from the planning department over to the building department. So we get all costs centered in the same place. And then also asking for what amounts to a budget amendment, an increase in appropriation of $49,000 that would come out of fund balance to fund the total of $80,000. So that's what's going on here. It's kind of two things, budget amendment, taking funds out of fund balance, and then also moving money from one department to another. We feel that getting these things digitized will really save staff a lot of time and energy. We're down in the basement often, FOIA requests, we're going through these boxes and shelves of documents, and it's very time consuming. Once we get to the things like minutes and more documents that are more text, it will be done with the OCR so that we can look up documents with keyword searches and those kinds of things.
Perfect.
I know it's kind of mundane. It may feel expensive. It is. But it's very tedious work if you're going to do this yourself.
Looks pretty cheap to me for all the stuff they're doing.
I was gonna say, yeah, no.
But keep in mind that as part of the FY24 budget request, you'll see some other monies to hopefully knock off the rest of this list that you see in this write-up. Be happy to answer any questions the jury may have.
Do you see in the future needing any water and sewer to be digitized yet? Because I see that's not on this list. Do you think there'll be a need moving forward?
I'm sure. It's not on the list because we're focusing on the general fund right here. But I think, I'm sure there's a need. I'm also sure that the water and sewer are much further ahead with digitization than we currently are in the non-water sewer operations.
This will bring us up to date? This, this project will bring us up to date for years, for the past years that we haven't done it, or?
As it relates, we hope so, yes. As it relates to the land use documents, the big construction plans, site plans, construction drawings, site plan drawings, that, all those roles that you see in various building, various offices, and in the basement will go away.
Cool.
So moving forward then, I mean, they're obviously not going to, graphics, forgive me, Graphic Sciences won't be in-house. Is the thought that we would ask that applicants with site plans be giving both a paper and a digital copy so that?
And we currently request that.
That's what I was thinking was true. And so we'll be able to maintain the building and zoning in a digital form then, moving forward.
Yes, I don't, you know, we may end up keeping one copy maybe. And I don't know how familiar you are, but there might be several versions of a site plan. We end up with all of them. And we won't be doing that anymore. But if you only have a digitized copy, there may be times where you need to print that out. We do have a printer if we need to look at that. It's hard to read some of that stuff when it's that small on the
Speaking of printer, do we, is that what we approved a couple of years ago? Over, didn't we approve? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, the big printer, yeah. I thought, I wasn't sure if that was a printer or a scanner that we approved. But I knew it was for the big stuff. Oh, it was not?
It was a scanner.
It was a scanner?
It was a scanner, not a printer.
So can we use that scanner in the future to scan plans in that we don't get digitally?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, just doing all the backlog.
Just all the, yeah, that's, I was just curious. I thought we approved something. I just couldn't remember.
I agree with your statement about cost too. Because I've worked with a lot of companies with our, my company's software. And having to bring in historical records, et cetera, et cetera, and the costs associated with this, especially when you're doing OCR on some documents. Just managing that, that paper and getting that digitized is labor-intensive.
Yeah.
I was not surprised by the cost at all. I thought it seemed reasonable.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget to authorize an additional appropriation of $49,000 in Department 371 Building and to reallocate $16,000 in Departments 701 Planning Budget for Bulk Digitization. This 371 Building for the bulk, I'm sorry, for the bulk digitization of building slash construction records in accordance with the State Records Reproduction Act and applicable state standards for capturing digital images from paper records and to authorize Township Manager to enter into a service agreement with Graphic Sciences for this work.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Smith. Further discussion or questions?
Saving the trees.
There we go.
Saving the trees.
All in favor of the motion to approve the budget amendments and the monies for digitization of the documents for general funds? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11. See on our agenda, request to waive a late fee for 4310 Sterling Way. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, there is a staff report on page 40 of your agenda packet. It also includes the letter requesting for consideration of the waiver. The Township received a written request from Chip Housing LLC to waive the late fee for the property located at 4310 Sterling Way. Late fee amounts $4,997.33. The ordinance has a timeline in terms of, we do quarterly billing, and how many days after due dates. Penalties and interest get added to the account. In this particular case, payment without penalty was due February 5th. This payment was received February 6th. The administration is recommending that the board not grant the waiver. We think it would be too much of a precedent-setting activity that you'd end up getting mired down, get mired into more often than you'd want. And then in particular, particularly due to the fact that this account, because I've had several late fees over the last several years. That's reflected in your report. I don't look at this as a one-off on behalf of the account holder. So that's our recommendation. At the end of the day, the customer has the full right, and we assist them and facilitate the appeal. And then it's up to the board. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion to deny the request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill penalty for the University Meadows located at 4310 Sterling Way, account number 03625, in the amount of $49,9733.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Brown?
This was a plausible letter that the guy wrote, but then after I got the staff report with the, all the penalties, it's not an accurate letter. So, yeah, I think it's a no-brainer to deny it, for me, anyway.
That was, that was my thoughts exactly. I read through the letter. I'm like, oh, I see why they're asking for this. They put it UPS, and there was a storm. Yeah. And then you look at those late. And in fact, am I accurate in stating that Chip's LLC actually applied for this a few years ago?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you remember it?
I think so, yeah.
And also you have on here that water bills are payable without penalty for 35 days from mailing date. I mean.
Yeah, they wait till the last second to send it second hand. No.
Sorry, things like, you know, you got to count for things to happen. 35 days is a long time.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
And I may be wrong on this, and Ms. Smith will correct me, but I believe all our account holders have an opportunity to be set up so that their bank accounts are debited every billing.
Yes.
So you wouldn't have to worry about the post office, or FedEx, or anybody if you chose that payment method.
Yes, it is, because I.
Right? Cost of fee?
No.
No.
Not for that.
No.
It doesn't?
No.
You can't align the credit card with those.
Oh, so if you go through ACH, it's not?
If you go through ACH, it's not.
No, I initiate ACH every single time, and.
Do you know why on his letter he put, due to a large amount, we cannot pay our bill electronically? Why, would that be his bank? Would that be, it's not an issue on this end, it'd be more of an issue on their end.
I figured it was their policy or something.
Yeah, I thought that was kind of strange. I've never seen somebody where they can't pay something ACH. That's just the way everybody's going nowadays.
I'm not aware, but I can't speak for certain. Can't speak with certainty on what their constraints are.
Yeah, so it's probably more of a constraint on their end, not on our end, so that.
They received it twenty-nine days in advance of the due date, so, yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to deny the request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill for 4310 Sterling Way for an amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars thirty-three cents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to deny passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven D on the agenda, recommendation for 2023 lawnmower purchase and trade-in. Mr. Stuhl dryer, again, would you be willing to introduce this?
Thank you, and the staff write-up on this begins on page forty-five of your agenda packet. We're asking the board's approval to purchase two 2023 Toro Z Master Commercial Lawn Mowers and to trade in one of our Skag Tiger Two Lawn Mowers. This would be with Bush Hardware in the amount of net to trade in twenty-five thousand six sixty-two. We did put, develop bid specifications, put this out for bid back in March and April. We did receive seven bids. One of these respondents met or exceeded all the minimum standard specifications. We did have two of the remaining six that did not fully meet the bid specs. And we, at the same time, we had two that met all of them except two of the specs that we consider significant, and those specs had to do with electronic fuel injection and rear discharge of the, of the grass. These machines would be deployed across the entire, across all the township facilities, and may be used here in a park, at water, wastewater grounds. The funding for this was budgeted in FY 2023 across three funds. The general fund is relates to the parks and rec, and then part in the water fund, and then part in the sewer fund as well. So with that, be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I'll make a motion. If nobody has any questions on this one. Approval of the purchase of two 2023 Toro Z Master Commercial Lawn Mowers and a trade-in of one Skag Tiger Two Lawn Mower from Bush Hardware in the amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars for the purchase and trade-in of our existing lawnmower, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven E on our agenda, approval of Jill Peters, who's present this evening, as the Assessor of Record for the Charter Township of Union. Again, Mr. Stuhl dryer, if you'd like to introduce why we're, we have this on our agenda.
Thank you. Two things. One, I'd like to formally introduce Ms. Jill Peters to the board. She's our new Township Assessor, hired back in April, so when you get a chance, stop by her office, and maybe after I'm done here and you're after, you're done with this item, maybe Jill will come up to the podium and just say a few words about herself, if she'd like to. You don't have to. So just a bit of history, we'd had a contracted assessor, Vander Vries LLC, for the last few years, they submitted a notice per the contractual arrangements to terminate the contract, and that was received in January with an effective date at the end of April. So that prompted us to begin to, begin a search process to fill this position. The search began with an advertisement for the opening. We, as we often do for this position, we went down two paths. We made it clear within the search process that we would entertain applications from individuals from a, I refer to it as a W-two full employee perspective, and then also we were willing to entertain contractual proposals from assessing firms. The, we began that search with the advertisement for the openings in early February. There was a deadline of March sixth to submit interested, for the interested parties to provide applications. Ms. Peters applied before the end of the due date of where we were accepting applications. Because of, this is one of these positions that's been hard to fill, there's not a lot of supply out there, so when we received Ms. Peters' application, it appeared to us to rise to the level of granting an interview. I recommended that we do that sooner rather than later, and I did not need to wait for the end of the application period to at least begin a process. So we had Ms. Peters come in and interview. We did put together an interview team that was comprised of the Finance Director, Community Economic Development Department Director, the Administrative Assistant, and the Accounting Specialist were part of the interview team, and then Ms. Peters did very well during the interview. Again, I don't think we need to wait for all the calendars to click, and, you know, we thought we had found the individual we were looking for, so an offer was made, I think the day of the, of the interview. And so Ms. Peters accepted the offer. She is here with us. She began work on April twenty-fourth. She is a, holds a, what I refer to in the old days as a Level Three Certification. Today, it's referred to as a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer. That is the level of designation that is required for the township based on our taxable The business about approving the, for the Assessor of Record, there's a couple state statutes that we need to follow. One is the Charter Township Act, and one is the General Township Act. If you read both of those, one uses words like shall, the other uses words like may in terms of the board shall appoint, or the board may appoint. Probably could have made an argument that the board, appointing somebody or designating an Assessor of Record may not have been needed. I decided to err on the side of caution. This is not an employment appointment, I want to make that clear. This is just a formal designation of Assessor of Record, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Make a motion. Make the motion to name Jill C. Peters as Assessor of Record for the Charter Township of Union.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Rice. Further discussion, questions?
I am so glad we have another in-house assessor. Thank you, Jill. It seemed like it was a strenuous task to have it contracted out, and I think that that's going to be wonderful to have you here. Thank you.
Ditto, and I'm excited you're here, too.
Where are you from?
I live right here in Malcozette.
Cool.
Yeah, and here ten years, I've lived in Malcozette for ten years. I keep in the Venus.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
Venus area, Macosta.
Very nice.
It's got to help to know the territory.
Yeah.
It's kind of fun, because this weekend, I was driving around with Tom Chubb, and I thought, yeah, this is great. I'm shopping and baking, and I can do my job at the same.
Yeah, that's right. That's awesome.
I drove over there, went to jail, and saw what they were doing, and, you know, they were there buying gum and donuts, and they don't open yet, and I thought, yeah, this is great, you know?
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Love it.
Just to thank you to all the staff that made this happen, too. I know Mark was out of town, if you remember, when all this passed.
Okay, no, I don't remember that.
Yeah, Mark was on vacation, had given instructions ahead of time to.
Take it easy, get it done. Nice.
I'd met with the Finance Director, the Assessor's position is part of the Finance Department.
Yeah.
Reports to the Finance Director, and I had had a conversation with Sheri. If things looked and felt right, you don't need to wait for me, I'm out of town.
Right.
Gave her negotiating parameters to work with them, and I came back, and we had somebody get ready to start in a month or so.
Thank you, Sheri, that's awesome.
Well, I'm anxious to work with you on the Board of Review, too. See you in July, right?
Yes, definitely. I have the list started.
Wonderful. Anything else? We have a motion to appoint Jill Peters as the Assessor of Record for Charter Township of Union. That'd be us. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I'm getting ready to go on a trip. I'm getting a little punky here. That finishes the first several items. We have one new business item left, eleven F. This is continuation discussion regarding resources for the Clerk's Office due to changes in the election law, and just as a note, the way I've kind of viewed this is, is in discussions with the organization and discussions with our clerk, Trustee Thering, there's really a two-pronged, two-pronged approach to make sure that the Clerk's Office is getting what it needs to do its job. One is the organization making sure the resources are there, and so that's our manager's wheelhouse. Leave that up to him, right? But the other side of it is, the discussion has led to, are we giving proper compensation? Yes or no? And so that, that's where I think our wheelhouse is, right? And so I'll leave it at that, and if anybody wants to introduce anything, would you like to, clerk?
I'll see what you guys are thinking first.
Okay. May I?
Go, please.
Or did you want to go?
No, no, that's, I'm actually, I've, no.
I'm only jumping in, just again, history, I think it was back in October, November, we started talking about this. James and I said we would investigate this further. What we decided not to do, correct me if I misspeak, we did have conversations about trying to do kind of a pseudo-wage study, but you didn't do any of that, did you?
No, because I, I felt the conversations that we were having along with the manager was kind of, that's a good place to start, so.
Right, and so what's happening is, the problem we're having with our Clerk's Office, that came out wrong.
How about the improvements we could make to our Clerk's Office?
Right. Is not unique to our township. I mean, it really comes down to the changes that occurred in the 2018 election with mail-in ballots, and then now again in the 2022 election, additional changes going on that is putting additional requirements on the Clerk's Office, tremendously so. And so I think that was what the impetus was for this discussion, and because we're not unique, I think a lot of other townships are in the same boat, where they're trying to grapple with this and trying to figure out what's the right, how do we address this? And so that was part of the conversation, at least that's what I remember we had, that it did make sense to go do a wage study, because they're going through the same thing and may not have corrected it to begin with at this point. Maybe doing a wage study down the road for us is something important to do, but we don't have that today, and I, and my feeling at least was it's not fair to continue to drag out the Clerk's Office and not make sure it's getting the resources it needs without, you know, don't want to wait on a wage study, right? I think there is at least some consensus that the landscape has changed. So with that, I did, I had a few meetings with Mark, I had a few conversations with our clerk, James and I continued to communicate, and I think I'm going to propose what I think we've been discussing, which is a stipend given to the Clerk's Office. So again, this is just this side of it, right? This is not making sure that the staff is supporting the Clerk's Office as needed. This is just making sure the clerk is compensated properly, that we provide a stipend and do that slightly differently, and this comes from, and you correct me if I'm wrong, clerk, conversations with you as well. What's happening in the state is they're giving stipends for even years, the bigger elections, and a different stipend for the odd years, and I'm not set on particular values. I know for sake of a beginning place, some of the numbers that have been bandied about, if you will, would be twenty-five hundred dollar for even-year elections, fifteen hundred dollar for odd-year elections. What I'm not sure what that means, so if I get into the details here, because devil's always in the details, does that mean, when you look at a general election, that generally includes a primary as well? Is that considered separate from a stipend perspective or not? This I'm just opening up so that you can think about that, but I feel it's important that our clerk be compensated. The other thing I think is important, too, is, and this comes out of our discussions as well, is we don't know what the 2022 law is going to have effect-wise on the clerk either, and so I think I can speak for you, Trustee Thering, jump in if you want to. We didn't want to make a permanent stipend fixed, but to be evaluated on an annual basis during the budgeting process, and that allows us, and at some point, maybe we get a wage study done, and then we know how to address all this, right? But in the meantime, an annual, annual determination that gets reevaluated based on the changes that we see coming forward. Does that make sense? Did I describe it okay?
You described it wonderfully.
So that's, that's where Trustee Thering and I kind of came up with as we began, or having those conversations, both with, again, with the organization and Clerk Cody. Clerk Cody, did I misconstrue anything that we talked about? Okay, thank you.
My only question would be, and I've heard some of what was discussed, but when it comes to staffing, what is kind of the plan to help, help with the process?
Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to try to address that at all?
We have not developed any plan yet in any detail. We have done a couple things. We have increased the hourly rate for the deputy clerk, which we think, not think, it does, add effectively more resources to the department, allows for, it helps prevent loss, if nothing else. And towards that end, we also provided her a key, so now she has all access to the office. So that's an operational positive. The clerk and I have not yet met to look at. Clerk and I have not yet met to look at. The operation in greater detail to see what we may need. Or what we may not need. But the discussion will be open, anything from if we need more staff to if we need to. Deputize, you know, quite possibly we could deputize other staff members that would provide additional resource for that office. So it'll be a whole range of things we, we look at.
Including potentially increasing hours during those election periods? I mean, is there so many hours?
I don't know what we're gonna do, but what I do know is that we will determine. What the reasonable level of resources are needed to run the operation. So that we have good elections. And then whatever that is. To the extent these brought to the board, it will be. But you can rest assured that I will not allow for. The thing to fall apart.
Clerk Cody, I'm sorry, were you done? Clerk Cody?
Um, as far as, I've been to a few different meetings, but nothing's really set to where I can explain it enough because nothing's. They don't have the specific laws written yet, we just have guesses on what we think we're doing, kind of thing, for the nine days. So I can't really say too much if I don't know, I don't want to say something and then it'd be wrong and, you know.
I, I think trustee Thering's and my discussions were based on, we already know this has changed because of 2018.
Yeah.
This is something that's happened in the past and it's going to change again, we just don't know what that looks like yet. So that's why we felt we shouldn't be looking at this as a long-term. Proposal other than that it needs to be evaluated annually to make sure that we're meeting the changes that are happening in your office, does that make sense?
Yeah. So I have deputized election inspectors to help because sometimes there's just too much to do and there's no way we could do it.
Do we have the money to pay them? Okay.
I mean, I try to figure that out when I'm.
Yeah.
You know.
And it is good news to have our deputy get that additional.
It's just, it can't.
But what about additional hours for the deputies? We haven't decided that yet?
And that's something that they can work out.
It's just some things, there's not enough hours in the day with the time, you know, when we get the ballots, fold them, stuff them and get them out, you don't have a certain amount of time to get them out.
But it's not just you, the deputy can do it?
I'm saying it was like four of us doing it. Because there was that many, you got to fold them and then you write all the stuff on them, I mean, there's a big process and it, and it's just, you physically can't do it that fast.
Understood, but we could hire temps, couldn't we, temporary?
Yeah, what I would expect.
They gotta be trained and deputized.
What I, what I would expect is as they work through this, they may come back and say, we'd like to amend the budget, to include this and here's why. Or they may have a solution that doesn't require additional. What I'm saying is we should leave that to them that it's come up with that determination.
There's specific requirements to touch about, like you have to be trained and then deputized.
Yeah, I understand that there's a lot of training for your deputies and, you know, it has to be done annually, I get all that. I just want to make sure there's money in the budget for it, that's all I want to make sure. And I really want to make sure that I hear what manager Stooldryer gets from all of the meetings you guys are pending having.
Yeah.
And then I'd like to hear that before I make a decision on compensation, to be honest.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if there's any positions created, you have to approve that.
Yeah, well, I mean, even a stipend, I mean, I need to know if you got seven, say you get ten, ten deputies for the next presidential election and primary. Say you get that, then do we still need to do a $2,500 stipend for that primary? You know, that's what I'm curious about.
For that, for that year, we're not, we're talking for the year.
Again, this is why we didn't want to make it a permanent thing, it was intended as a. For this year.
I, I mean, I'm very comfortable doing something this year to reevaluate.
Next.
This fall, when we get to budgeting process.
Yeah, correct, correct.
And I think another thing to consider is not just the actual workload increase, but the amount of responsibility.
Yes.
She may have all these people underneath her deputized, but ultimately something goes wrong. Everybody's pointing to you and I don't think in today's climate, we want to shortchange anything with elections. And so I would be willing to do what it takes to make sure that the clerk's office is properly staffed, the clerk is properly compensated. To make sure that everything runs smoothly and that she is compensated for her increased responsibility and duties.
Agreed.
We just don't have the parameters for that yet.
I, I, yes, I get it, I'm just saying, you know, after receiving our financial statement today, we're not hurting for cash.
No.
So I'm not saying we gotta go free will spend it, but, you know, we also need to make sure that it's done correctly.
We are, we as a board are responsible to make sure our elections are run well. And it's, and it falls on the clerk, but we have to provide the resources to clerk.
We as a board have had previous meetings and had discussions about this. And I believe some of us have said and talked about. Some sort of, I'll, I'll just call it a stipend, we've said, called it many different things, but that's ultimately what it is. And I have, just by the luck of the draw, have talked to, to previous board members. Before I came on board and that was a subject that was brought up then. So this is not, this is nothing that's new that just all of a sudden came out of the blue. This is something that's been kind of actually years in the making and, and we're finally at the point where we're going to act on it. So we're not inking things, we're, we're, we're gonna make a decision now and, and we're gonna reevaluate that coming up. So I think, I, I think we've taken a really nice approach to this, I have complete confidence in our clerk and our manager, they will, they will continue. To provide. The elections that we would all expect to be and I just think we need to do our part and. Have a stipend for our clerk and review it again in the fall.
So a couple, if the board ends up coalescing and starts thinking about motion language. Indicate whether it's annual or not. Indicate when it's gonna be paid. If you would. And I think those are the two main things we're looking for operationally so we can implement whatever it is you may or may not decide.
I see two people using pens, are we, is somebody trying to write something out? I hope.
You know, I, I try to avoid making the motions.
Right, no, I understand.
I can, but.
Trustee Smith is at.
I'm just taking notes.
Yeah, that's all I'm doing too.
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to do it the proper way, so I would need some help and. Some help with that.
Do you want to make a motion just for this one year right now for fiscal year?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's.
For fiscal year twenty-three to be paid on a certain date.
And to be reevaluated, kind of as policy, be reevaluated on an annual basis.
Reevaluated on annual base, maybe, you know.
During budget cycle.
During, but, well, if we're starting the budget cycle. So we'd have to prove the budget, but would we have enough information in December for twenty-four or is it we're gonna have to?
Probably not.
So we could just make the motion, just have it for this year and just.
You can always adjust the budget, just wait until after the year's over and then figure out.
That's fine.
What they would need, or, you know, like, how much did they actually do extra? I'm saying this as a, you know, like, not me, it's somebody else is what I'm saying, just, I would do it. You know, after you see what they did for that year, you know what I mean? But I don't know, that's just throwing it out there.
Are you comfortable with that, clerk Cody?
Well, I think if I was gonna do it for somebody else's department, that's how I would do it.
I want to wait for the managers.
You know, see what the year was and then, you know, get a stipend that next year if they didn't do anything, but then you would know towards the end of the year, I don't know. That's just a thought.
Did you have something, you look like you wanted to say something?
Well. The, the board. Has been talking about this for quite a while. And the board understandably finds it difficult to talk about this to some degree in specificity. What I have heard over the course of the discussion. Is. And, you know, that there's been general. I'll say general, may not be unanimous, but general acceptance of this idea. Of a one-time annual payment. And that there's been recognition that. The even year elections because of the state laws. Are more involved than odd year elections. So there's been general acceptance of the idea that one year is more difficult than another year. Twenty twenty-three. Is an odd year election. And we didn't have a May election, I don't blink. Not sure what the election's calendar is the rest of the year, but. I, I could see a motion, if you're looking for language, that somebody would move to. Provide the township clerk with an one-time payment. Made during the last, you know, paycheck of twenty twenty-three. In the amount of X. And that this would be. Evaluated on an annual basis. And just kind of leave it at that. And that'll get you moving and out the door and.
You said evaluated on a.
Annual, annual basis.
You know, go, go, because you're not gonna be able to go into a lot of depth until clerk and I sit down and particularly I can begin to understand. What the level of resources are that are necessary. And how does that compare with existing budgeted numbers?
So you guys came up with, what is it, fifteen hundred?
For an odd year, twenty-five, and to be honest, that comes from partly what's happening with other townships. I mean, that's kind of where that's based from.
Right, and that's just kind of what I'm.
In conversation with our clerk too. But I'm, what I'm unsure of, and I'm gonna ask you a question, if you're not comfortable, you don't have to answer, but. If, in your knowledge of that is that if there was a primary and a general, or let's say there's a presidential election, then a primary and general. Generally, what we're seeing with the stipends with the other municipalities, is that for each of those pieces?
A lot of the other clerks are getting like a thousand dollars per each election extra because it like increased so much. I think, I know of three of them that are getting a thousand dollars extra, some of them their pay increased, but.
Now, for each election, you mean, for example, next year would be May, August primary and the general in November?
Yeah, unless that law's changed and there's two primaries.
What, uh, what townships are those?
I know, I don't know exactly right off, okay, so, I don't know what township it is, but Hannah got it.
That'd be Isabella.
Doris?
Doris Wise.
Yeah, Wise Township.
Doris.
Methner.
I can email them and then email you back and see exactly how much they get for a stipend, just send a mass one out. Or how much their pay increase was.
Yeah, that'd be good. I, I don't know what these clerks are making, but, I mean, I know that people are getting raises all over the state. I just, like I say, I don't have the facts. Don't have.
That's, that's why we didn't want to propose a salary change either, this was something fairly negligible, but it at least recognizes that our clerk's office is being stressed and.
Something for the help.
And how many hours does the deputy work now, authorized sixteen a week?
She's not authorized hours, she's authorized pay.
So we increased her pay and now she's working less hours?
That she has been, because I was, I didn't know what to do. Well, that. Had to balance it out, kind of, and I was like, well.
I can answer that.
Okay.
The twenty twenty-three budget. At the rate of pay, at the then rate of pay.
Yeah.
It was budgeted at twelve hours.
Okay.
It effectively was twelve hours a week. And so from a workload perspective, that's the, that's what was contemplated, twelve hours a week. And looking, and, and they've done a good job of, of maintaining the budget. In twenty twenty-two. It's not a straight line, I mean, keep that in mind. But in twenty twenty-two, the average was thirteen hours a week, if you looked at it over the full year. So they were operating within their budget. In twenty twenty-one, the average was twelve hours a week. In twenty twenty-three, the first quarter, it was averaging eight and a half hours a week, which would be. You'd expect the first quarter to be lower than, there are gonna be other weeks where it's twenty hours or something. So. That's the workload that's been going on. And in twenty twenty-three, you have increased the deputy's pay by, I think, three dollars an hour. And. If the board is thinking about, say, fifteen hundred dollar. That's about just a hair over seven percent. Increase, not to the base wage, but you could look at it as a seven percent. Raise. The math is seven percent. At this point, you're not adding to the base wage, which I think is. Fiscally responsible for the lack of information. And fifteen hun, fifteen hundred bucks, you know, seven percent, it's not chump change either, so.
And then we need to make a, a budget adjustment or we'll do that later in the year?
We would build this into our July budget amendment.
Okay, got it.
The, the deputy pay increase will be part of that amendment, this fifteen hundred dollars or whatever the number is, would be part of the amendment. What you're, what you may do tonight is commit yourself to that. And so when you get to the budget amendment, I would presume there would be no more discussion.
I would like to make a motion to provide the clerk with a one-time payment. Of fifteen hundred dollars to be paid in December of twenty twenty-three. And to evaluate possible future payments on an annual basis.
Do you want it to be the last check of December twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, that's fine. To be paid in the last check of December of twenty twenty-three. And to evaluate possible future payment, payments on an annual basis.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Smith. Had a lot of discussion already, but I'm happy to look for further comments, questions.
I appreciate. I'm just gonna reiterate the fact that, you know, workload and everything like that is one thing, but I think for me, the primary driver on my vote was the increased responsibilities. That she faces for her, her and any deputy that she has underneath her, so that's why I supported the motion. I will also support this motion just because clerk, clerk.
Clerk Cody. There's no clerk.
Not only what she's about to come up to, but the past work she has done and showed us that she is on top of this. And very well deserving of, of this.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Agreed.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion for a stipend for our clerk at the end of this year and to be reviewed annually, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
The only reason why I voted on that is because the, when the trustees got a raise, they voted on it too, so I assumed it was okay.
I never got a raise.
That was, it was.
Previously, previously.
It was previous to this board.
The previous board. Hey, man, we're talking inflation here, man, this is ridiculous.
As a position of a trustee, I, I may not be a trustee or, you know, so it's. As a position of a trustee, I, I may not be a trustee or, you know, so it's.
I have no issue with her voting.
No.
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 No, absolutely not.
Clerk, I appreciate your patience. I know this has been in discussion since 2017, basically. By, by previous boards. And, um, not that I was necessarily part of that, but, um, sorry, that wasn't addressed for you earlier. All right, moving on. That finishes our new business, which brings us to item 12 on the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment's restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. Uh, if you choose to address it public, please state your name and address for the record. And we'll open extended public comment at 8:33 PM. Seeing no one here in person, and I'm told no one's connected in remotely, we'll close extended public comment at 8:33 PM. Item 13 on our agenda, manager's comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you have the floor.
I just have one and it was alluded to earlier in the evening. We are extending the Care Store Drive until May 19th, primarily because we're anticipating that there'll be an article about the, uh, effort in tomorrow's epicenter. So we think that will trigger some additional donations. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Final board, board member comment, trustee Brown?
Just one thing. Um, I know we're always real responsive to financial things and things like that, but, um, as a trustee, um, I think one of the most important thing is our employees here at Union Township. And I just want to lift up Jill Peters again and say, it's awesome to have you on our team. And if there's anything, sure, there's nothing you need from just a little old trustee, but if there's anything from us or from myself that you need, please, please just let us know. But just want to say, welcome aboard again.
Well, thank you very much. I'm, I'm happy to be here.
Great. Well, thanks, Jill. That's all I.
Trustee Bills?
I'd also like to echo that sentiment. Welcome, Jill. I have to apologize for my phone going off, for my medicine alarm. Uh, I keep forgetting to turn that off. And I forgot it last time. And I want to let you know that at the Isabella County DOC meetings, if your phone goes off, you have to buy dinner. So we could always, you know, institute that rule. And maybe that would make it, make more compliance, you know, uh, for me.
Hold on.
Did I hear you buying us dinner tonight? Is that what I just heard?
Negatory Big Ben, however.
Just gotta have to be careful of the quorum issue.
Right, yeah. And then the, the COG meeting is next Wednesday, and they say they're gonna have a legislative update for the county admin, county commissioners, and state reps. And that they're having a presentation, uh, from Isabella County Animal Control, in case any of you trustees want to go. I'm going, because I think that's interesting to learn about what the rules are, everything like that. So that's all I've got. And happy spring, finally, people! I bought some flowers! I'm planting flowers! I'm excited! Okay, that's all.
Well, welcome, Jill, like everyone else has said. Um, I'd also like to commend the board for having a nice civilized discussion regarding elections. I think we've seen too many times, um, boards kind of go a little crazy when it comes to election discussions. So it's nice that we can have a civil discussion on making sure that the elections are run smoothly, smoothly, as, uh, the clerk has always done here at the township. And so commend Clerk Cody on all the work she's done.
Treasure Rice?
I actually have a few tonight. Welcome, Jill. Also, um, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to Sherry for, and her team for the hard work on the audit and everybody that, you know, does everything for the audit. That was, it's amazing job. And so thank you for that. Also, to piggyback on the donations and stuff like that. If, if you guys are free on Saturday, be sure to stop by Cornerstone Church. They, once a month, the second Saturday every month, actually do, um, they support local nonprofits every month. Um, this month, it's Clothing Inc. So they have donations for Clothing Inc. Um, and you also get to see local artisans and that there. And, um, so we try to keep it to the, the local artisans and, um, local nonprofits. So, and that's Saturday from nine to one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What do you mean local artisans? At the donation this weekend?
Um, it's a market.
Oh, it's a market, okay.
Yes. So there's local artisans that are, you know, taking and making things to sell. And anybody that buys a spot to vend there, all of that money gets given to the local nonprofit. None of it stays.
Holy cow.
So.
That's nice.
Yeah. And each month, it's a different nonprofit. Um, but all local.
Good idea.
So.
That's really generous.
I think they queued up with the Center.
Yes.
I remember seeing that they checked that they were holding up on Facebook from the Cornerstone Church.
Gotcha, yep. So.
Clerk Cody?
I was trying to write it down. Welcome, Jill.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry and Kiri and everybody that worked on the audit. And then the anticipation date for the Dunkin' Donuts opening is May 22nd, if anybody needs to know that. Oh, everybody was asking, so I asked one of the girls that, she's gonna be the new manager, and right now they're doing all the training and stuff there. So I asked her what the date is they're gonna open. And she's like, well, the anticipation date is the 22nd, so.
My children, thank you. Every time we go by there, they're asking.
And road commission's not helping them out right now.
No.
No. Have their grand opening and have lanes closed.
This is mostly our fault, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we had any funds in that piece.
Oh, we don't?
I don't think we do. They, they covered, the road commission covered it, didn't ask for.
I love those guys, man.
I know, right?
Oh, we do? Oh, I misspoke.
I thought we did.
Okay, well, it's our fault, too. Ah, that was it, thank you. Trustee Therrien?
Welcome, Jill, and thank you for being here. Also, I, I think we as a board did a good thing tonight.
Yes.
With our clerk. Thank you for being behind that motion.
Thanks for all the conversations and work that you put in on that as well. And thank you, Lisa, for being patient with us. Um, welcome, Jill. I had the opportunity, I happened to just be here for a meeting on her first day, and she had been staying late, so we had a wonderful conversation. Phones. I had just noticed I hadn't turned mine off, not, not a minute before yours went off.
Oh, my god.
And on my list every meeting, and yet I've never done it, I don't think, is at the beginning of the meeting, say, please turn off your phones. So.
We need to make that motion, like.
The dinner thing.
The dinner thing?
Cookies.
Donuts, donuts?
Dunkin' Donuts?
Happy Mother's Day, by the way, that's coming up.
Yeah, happy Mother's Day to all the moms.
Happy to entertain. Any motions for?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Support. Motion by Rice, support by Smith. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.